...meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Baker, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Sabe George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Jackson, Counselor Lamatina, Counselor Linehan, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Presley, Counselor Wu, and Counselor Zagum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, I'd like to ask all counselors and guests to please rise, and I will hand it over to Counselor O'Malley, who will introduce our faith leader for the day. After the invocation is delivered, please remain standing, and Counselor O'Malley will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Counselor O'Malley?
Thank you, Madam President. Good afternoon, colleagues, friends, and distinguished guests. It is my honor to bring up to the dais today Reverend Annie Rousseau, someone who I consider an incredibly dear friend, a spiritual leader, and one of the finest political activists in the city of Boston. Reverend Rousseau is a longtime resident of Jamaica Plain, where she lives with her wife, Nancy, and she works in affordable housing and as well as being the Weekend Associate at Hope Central Church in Jamaica Plain. She's just an amazing individual, someone I am proud and lucky to call a friend. Please join me in welcoming Reverend Annie Rousseau.
Thank you, Counselor. Let us pray. God of all nations and peoples, we are grateful for the dreams of freedom, justice, and peace forever promised by your Spirit. We are grateful that you call every man and woman to live by that dream, to embody it in our world by braving the work, asking the questions, making the sacrifices, and organizing the community. We pray today for the world, a world that is dedicated to wealth and possessions instead of equality and justice. We pray for all the nations overwhelmed by war, violence, and injustice. Grant us your vision of peace and righteousness. We pray for our beloved city now and during the coming days. Keep her and her citizens safe as we welcome your sons and daughters from around the world. Bless those who run the marathon, especially those charity runners who run so others may be cured, have a place to call home, or enough to eat. May the hills be gentle to them, the road rise to meet them, and the wind be at their backs. And bless these public servants that stand before you today, and all those who set aside their private pursuits to serve the public good. Give them the wisdom to discern that larger good, gladness in seeking and serving it, realization that since we are all inescapably connected, we are also accountable to each other and to this earthly home we share. Give them courage enough to take the small daily steps toward fulfilling your grand dream for us all. May they be given the power of discernment to know what is right and good for all the citizens of Boston. Inspire them so that they may be the source of bold ideas. Brace them with sensitivity so that they may be compassionate leaders of our city. We ask for your blessing too on their families, colleagues, and dedicated staff that support them in their work. God of hope, together with you and with each other, we strive to build a city where diversity is a source of enrichment, neighborhoods are respected and made strong, communities become more inclusive, a city that is beautiful, true, and worthy of your generosity to us. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the republic for which it stands, one nation under all indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Rousseau. Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Madam Clerk, could you please also mark that Counselor Campbell is present as well as Counselor Presley?
Thank you, Madam President.
And now, I am happy to turn it over again to Counselor O'Malley for a very special, special presentation.
Thank you again, Madam President. I'd like to ask Joan Benoit Samuelson to please join me on the dais, as well as her husband Scott, and folks from the BAA, and John Hancock, and fellow well-wishers if you'd like to just join me and Joan and the counsel president on the dais. Four years ago, this body started the tradition. It was the year after the Marathon bombing and attack, which obviously resonated with every Bostonian and everyone throughout the country, but wanted to really recognize some of the legendary figures in Boston in running part of the Marathon. We began by acknowledging the great work of Dave McGilvery, who's been race director for decades. A year after that, we celebrated Team Hoyt, a father-son team who have more fighting spirit than anyone. Last year, we celebrated Jack Foltz on the 40th anniversary of his famous Run for the Hoses. And this year, we are celebrating perhaps the greatest athlete of all time, particularly in running, Joan Benoit Samuelson. There is an iconic ad that Nike did, we were discussing it earlier, in the early 80s. I don't remember it, I was too young to remember at the time, but luckily YouTube has made it really relevant again. And it begins by a woman hitting her alarm clock. It's 5:25 in the morning, and you hear the voiceover of the morning news show, or, you know, talking about the weather and talking about news and contests. And as we're listening to this, we see this woman put on her sneakers, her Nikes, stretching, then goes to the door, opens the door, it's raining. Woman closes the door, we assume she's going to go back up to bed like most people would do. Instead, she grabs her raincoat, heads out. As she grabs her raincoat off the back of the door, we see a bib, and the voiceover says, "Congratulations to our own Joni Samuelson, who won the Boston Marathon yesterday with a time of 2:22." I can't tell you how that ad has impacted me, not only in running, but in politics. How many days have we had where it's literally or figuratively been raining, and it's been tough and it's been hard, but because of the strength that's been shown by people like Joan Benoit Samuelson, we know to go back out there and fight harder. It's what she has done every step of the way. She has won the Boston Marathon. In 1979, when she was a senior in college, she went on to win it and have a course record for a decade-plus, three years after that. In 1984, the first time there was the Women's Marathon in the Olympics, she ran two weeks or three weeks before the trial, she literally had knee surgery. She's still qualified. She laced up in LA, and she won the Women's Marathon with a record that also endured for many, many years. She is one of the finest athletes of all time. And not only is her athleticism so amazing, the leadership that she has shown for everybody, just throughout, we are teeming with acolytes of Joan Benoit Samuelson, and how she's always given back, always supported the Marathon, raised hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars for charity and support along the way. Although she is a mainer at heart, we also claim her here in Boston, and she is an incredibly loyal daughter of the city that we love. And that is why I am so honored, on behalf of all of my colleagues, today to proclaim April 12th as Joan Benoit Samuelson Day in the city of Boston, as it will be from time in memoriam.
Thank you, Counselor Matt, and my gratitude to the entire Boston City Council. I am almost speechless out here, but fortunately, I'm surrounded by some very near and dear friends. Nobody receives a proclamation like this or runs a marathon alone. It takes countless people to support that single marathoner, and I'm indebted to my husband Scott, my family, and to many dear friends who are here with me on the dais. I'd like to thank Tom Grillf and the BAA for continuing this journey in so many positive ways, and to Rob Breedman and John Hancock for sponsoring an event that knows literally no finish line. I'd also like to congratulate the Hoyts, Dave McGilvery, and Jack Foltz for being recognized on this dais before my time. And I'd just like to say that I don't consider myself one of the greatest athletes, I just consider myself one of the most passionate athletes. I love the sport of running. It has been very good to me through thousands and thousands of miles, 150,000 to be exact. And I grew up in an era right as Title IX legislation came to be, and it was thought if a woman ran more than a mile, she'd do bodily harm and never bear children. Well, two children later, who both have run the Boston Marathon, and a daughter who will be running on Monday. And if the group behind me would be so kind to give me a number for Monday, I might jump in with my daughter. But I look forward to running my first marathon in the state of Maine, which was once part of Massachusetts. I've never run a marathon in the state of Maine. I have a big birthday in May, five days before the marathon, and I'll be running with a gentleman who turns 63 days before I do, who will also be running Boston and then coming to run the Sugarloaf Marathon with me, who has Parkinson's disease. So this event touches everyone, and I just am delighted to be a very small part of something that is so wonderful and knows no finish line. So hopefully, it won't rain on Monday, but again, my thanks to each and every one of you for coming forth to celebrate not only me, but the bigger world of running and life, because all the charities that are benefiting from the Boston Marathon reach out tentacles to really every sector of life. Godspeed to each and every one of you. Thank you so much.
Acknowledge everyone in the audience who's running on Monday. Would you please stand? You're running on Monday. To that good-looking guy in the green jacket in the front row, that's my father, George. He's running, he's raising money for Dana Farber, he's already raised $26,200 in honor of my sister Jill. Picture.
Congratulations, Joe.
Thank you very much, Matt. That was very special.
So you keep this? I'll get you a lot of things. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Fantastic. Are you kidding? I wouldn't miss it.
Congratulations, Joe.
Thank you, Joan.
Thank you very much, Matt. That was very special.
So you keep this? I'll get you a lot of things. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Fantastic. Are you kidding? I wouldn't miss it.
Thank you so much, Counselor O'Malley. Thank you, Matt, for that presentation, and thank you to Joan. Madam Clerk, could you please mark that Counselor Baker is here? And we will begin with approval of the minutes from last meeting. Are there any changes or amendments to those minutes? Seeing and hearing none, the minutes stand approved. And we will begin. Today's meeting is going to be a lengthy reading, so we thank Madam Clerk in advance.
My pleasure.
These are the individual dockets that make up the FY '18 budget, so communications from His Honor, the Mayor.
Docket number 0536, message and order for an annual appropriation and tax order for the FY 2018 filed in the office of the city clerk on April 10, 2017. Docket number 0537, message and order for annual appropriation of the school department for the FY 2018 filed in the office of the city clerk on April 10, 2017. Docket number 0538, message and order approving and appropriation of $40 million to the other post-employment benefits known as OPEB Liability Trust Fund, established under Section 20 of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 32B, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 10, 2017. Docket number 0539, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to appropriate the amount of $45,385,000 from the city's capital grant fund in order to provide funding for various transportation and public realm improvements. These projects are aligned with the goals of Go Boston 2030, the city's transportation master plan. The fund shall be credited to the capital grant fund from the parking meter fund. Docket number 0540, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to enter into one or more leases, lease purchase, or installment sales agreements in fiscal year 2018 in an amount not to exceed $27,500,000. These funds are to be used by various city departments for the acquisition of equipment and furtherance in their respective governmental functions. The list of equipment includes computer equipment, hardware and software, motor vehicles, trailers, ambulances, firefighting equipment, office equipment, telecommunication equipment, photocopying equipment, medical equipment, school and educational equipment, the school buses, parking meters, streetlights installations, traffic signal equipment, and equipment functionally related to and components of the foregoing, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 10, 2017. Docket number 0541, message and order for the appropriation of an order in the amount of $255,260,000 to the acquisition of interest in land or the acquisition of assets for the landscaping, alteration, remediation, rehabilitation, or improvement of public land, the construction, reconstruction, rehabilitation, improvement, alteration, remodeling, enlargement, demolition, removal, or extraordinary repairs of public buildings, facilities, assets, works, or infrastructure, for the cost of feasibility studies or engineering or architectural services for plans and specifications for the development, design, purchase, and installation of computer hardware or software and computers, assisted integrated financial management and accounting systems for any other public work improvement or asset within a maximum useful life of at least five years, and not otherwise specified for planting shade trees for the purpose of various city departments, including the Boston Center for Youth and Families, Boston Redevelopment Authority, Department of Innovation and Technology, Public Works, School and Transportation Department, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 10, 2017. Docket number 0542, message and appropriation order in the amount of $3,135,000 for the construction and rehabilitation of municipal golf courses, including the acquisition and reconstruction of land, installation and replacement of irrigation systems, the construction and rehabilitation of buildings, and the cost of equipment and furnishings for the purpose of the Parks and Recreation Department, filed in the office of the clerk on April 10, 2017. And docket number 0543, message and appropriation order in the amount of $660,000 in aid of the Economic Development Industrial Corporation and the Boston Redevelopment Authority, DBA, Boston Planning and Development Agency, for the engineering and design of improvements at the Raymond L. Flynn Marine Park, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 10, 2017.
Dockets number 0536 through 0543 will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0549, message and order authorizing a limit for the mayor's Office of Arts and Cultural Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2018 to purchase goods and services to support the operation of the Strand Theater. This revolving fund shall be funded by receipts from rental fees for the use of the Strand Theater. The mayor's office of arts and culture will be the only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at $150,000. Docket number...
I think we may have skipped docket 0544.
I did. I'm sorry. You already read that, Paige. Docket... No. Very sorry about that. Was out of order.
Don't worry.
Docket number 0544, message and order for your approval and ordinance authorizing certain revolving funds in accordance with provisions of General Law, Chapter 44, 53 E and a half, as amended by Chapter 218 in the Act of 2016, the Municipal Modernization Act, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 10, 2017.
Docket number 0544 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0545, message and order authorizing the law department revolving fund for fiscal year 2018 to purchase goods and services for repairs to city property. This revolving fund shall be funded by receipts from recoveries for damage to city property caused by third parties. The law department shall be the only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at $500,000. Docket number 0546, message and order authorizing a limit for the environment department revolving fund for fiscal year 2018 to facilitate the purchase of offsets in greenhouse gas emissions, which shall be associated with a portion of the electricity consumed by the city annually, as well as to operate and maintain the city's existing solar facilities and to expand the city's generating capacity. This revolving fund shall be credited with any and all receipts from the sale of solar renewable energy certificates produced by the city's solar photovoltaic arrays. Receipts and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed $250,000. Docket number 0547, message and order authorizing the limit for the mayor's Office of Tourism revolving fund for fiscal year 2018 to purchase goods and services to support events and programming on and around City Hall Plaza, to advance tourism and to promote participation in public celebrations, civic, and cultural events. This revolving fund shall be funded by receipts from payments for the use of City Hall Plaza pursuant to the City of Boston Code ordinances 11-7.14. The mayor's office of tourism will be the only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at $150,000. Docket number 0548, message and order authorizing a limit for the mayor's Office of Arts and Cultural Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2018 to purchase goods and services to support public art, to enhance the public realm throughout the city of Boston. This revolving fund shall be funded by receipts from easements within the public way granted by the Public Improvements Commission. The mayor's office of arts and culture will be the only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at $150,000. Docket number 0549, message and order authorizing a limit for the mayor's Office of Arts and Cultural Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2018 to purchase goods and services to support the operation of the Strand Theater. This revolving fund shall be funded by receipts from rental fees for the use of the Strand Theater. The mayor's office of arts and culture will be the only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at $150,000. Docket number 0549, message and order authorizing a limit for the mayor's Office of Arts and Culture Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2018 to purchase goods and services to support the operation of the Strand Theater. This revolving fund shall be funded by receipts from payments for the use of City Hall Plaza pursuant to the City of Boston Code ordinances 11-7.14. The mayor's office of tourism will be the only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at $150,000. Docket number 0548, message and order authorizing a limit for the mayor's Office of Arts and Cultural Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2018 to purchase goods and services to support public art, to enhance the public realm throughout the city of Boston. This revolving fund shall be funded by receipts from easements within the public way granted by the Public Improvements Commission. The mayor's office of arts and culture will be the only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at $150,000. Docket number 0549, message and order authorizing a limit for the mayor's Office of Arts and Culture Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2018 to purchase goods and services to support the operation of the Strand Theater. This revolving fund shall be funded by receipts from rental fees for the use of the Strand Theater. The mayor's office of arts and culture will be the only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at $150,000. Docket number 0550, message and order authorizing a limit of the Boston Public Schools revolving fund for fiscal year 2018 to support the maintenance and repair for BPS facilities, including custodial and utility costs for extended building time, floor refinishing, landscaping, and building repairs. Receipts from lease, permit, and use, and parking fees for BPS facilities will be deposited in the fund. BPS will be the only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall not exceed $2,600,000. Docket number 0551, message and order authorizing a limit to the Boston Public Schools revolving fund for fiscal year 2018 to repair and purchase Boston Public Schools' computer technology, including computers, mobile devices, and instructional services. This revolving fund shall be credited with any and all receipts from equipment sales and repair fees for Boston Public Schools' technology. Receipts and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed $1,500,000. Docket number 0552, message and order authorizing a limit for the Boston Public Schools' revolving fund for the fiscal year 2018 for Boston Public Schools' transportation costs, including bus and public transportation costs. This revolving fund shall be credited with revenue received by Boston Public School Department for the provision of transportation to groups and entities for field trips and activities other than transportation to and from school. Receipts and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed $125,000. Docket number 0553, message and order authorizing a limit for the Inspection Services Department revolving fund for the fiscal year 2018 to reimburse for administrative costs to those city agencies which enforce CBC, Chapter 16, Section 1.9 and 1.9b, and costs associated with licensing and registration. This revolving fund shall be credited with receipts from all dog registration fees collected pursuant to CBC, Chapter 18, Section 1.4, Section 6 through 10, and fines pursuant to CBC, Chapter 16, Section 1.9 and 1.9b. Receipts and resulting expenditures from the fund shall not exceed $300,000. Docket number 0554, message and order authorizing a limit for the Boston Centers for Youth and Families, BCYF, revolving fund for fiscal year 2018 to pay salaries and benefits of employees and to purchase supplies and equipment necessary to operate City Hall childcare. This revolving fund shall be credited with any and all receipts from tuition paid by parents or guardians for school enrolled at the center. Receipts and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed $750,000. Docket number 0555, message and order authorizing a limit for the Boston Police Department revolving fund... Receipts and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed $750,000. Docket number 0555, message and order authorizing a limit for the Boston Police Department revolving fund for fiscal year 2018 to support training programs for offices from non-City of Boston law enforcement agencies. The academy will charge participating outside law enforcement agencies tuition for each recruit, police officer, or special police officer they send to the academy. The tuition paid by the outside agencies will be used to purchase training equipment, certify instructors, update facilities, and to provide funds for training needs and otherwise but not otherwise budgeted. The police academy will be the only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at $100,000. Docket number 0556, message and order authorizing a limit for the Boston Police Department's revolving fund for fiscal year 2018 to support the K-9 units' training program for officers and police dogs for non-City of Boston law enforcement agencies. The Special Operating Division will charge tuition and other fees to outside law enforcement agencies for their K-9 unit. The tuition and other fees by outside agencies will be used to purchase training equipment, certify instructors, update facilities, and provide funds for other training needs not otherwise budgeted. The Special Operations Division will be the only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at $75,000. Docket number 0557, message and order authorizing a limit for the Boston Police Department revolving fund for fiscal year 2018 for the purpose of purchasing, leasing, or renting space, materials, and equipment to be partially or wholly used by the instructional purposes for the new Hackney Carriage driver applications and providing funds for other training needs not otherwise budgeted. Receipts and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed $100,000. Docket number 0558, message and order authorizing a limit for the Boston Police Department revolving fund for fiscal year 2018 to pay salaries and benefits of employees and to purchase supplies, equipment necessary to operate the Police Department's Fitness Center. Revenue for this fund is derived from monthly membership fees. Receipts and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed $250,000. Docket number 0559, message and order authorizing a limit for the Boston Public Schools revolving fund for fiscal year 2017 to support the maintenance and repair for BPS facilities, including custodial and utility costs for extended building time, floor refinishing, landscaping, and building repairs. Receipts from lease, permit, and use and parking fees for BPS facilities will be deposited in this fund. BPS will be the only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall not exceed $2,600,000. Docket number 0560, message and order authorizing a limit for the Environment Department revolving fund for fiscal year 2017 to facilitate the purchase and offset of greenhouse gas emissions, which shall be associated with a portion of electricity consumed by the city annually, as well as to operate and maintain the city's existing solar facilities and to expand, expand, I'm sorry, the city's generating capacity. This revolving fund shall be credited with any and all receipts from the sale of solar renewable energy certificates produced by the city's solar photovoltaic arrays. Receipts and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed $250,000. Docket number 0561, message and order authorizing the appropriation of $1,200,000 from the income of the George Francis Bachman Fund. The funds are to be expended under the direction of the Commissioner of Parks and Recreation for the maintenance and improvement of the Boston Common and Park in existence since January 12, 1887.
Dockets number 0545 through 0561 will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means. And Madam Clerk, before we proceed with the next segment of the agenda, I've received a request to move for reconsideration of the placement of docket number 0544. Is there any objection to reconsider this docket and its assignment? No, okay. So, this had been assigned to the Committee on Government Operations and upon consultation seeming more appropriate for a joint assignment to the Committee on Ways and Means as well as Government Operations. But I'll defer to the two chairmen for any further comments on that. Great, okay. So, thank you, Madam Clerk. That is docket 0544, jointly assigned to the Committee on Government Operations and Ways and Means. And now, we will proceed with reports of public officers and others.
Madam President, I'll read 0562 through 0565.
Please, thank you.
Docket number 0562, notice received from the mayor of his absence from the city from 6:15 a.m. on Thursday, April 6 until 9:45 p.m. on Wednesday, April 12, 2017. Docket number 0563, communication was received from Massport regarding Boston Logan International Airport parking project and environmental notification forum. Docket number 0564, communication was received from Councilor Josh, Josh Saikum that he will not be in attendance at the Boston City Council meeting on Wednesday, April 12, 2017. And docket number 0565, communication was received from Brian P. Golden, Director of the Boston Planning and Development Agency regarding proposed minor modifications to the South End Urban Renewal Plan Project Number Mass R-56 with respect to Parcel 30A.
Dockets number 0562 through 0565 will be placed on file. Reports of committees, and Councilor Lenihan, would you like these two dockets read together? Madam Clerk, could you please read the next two together?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0416, the Committee on Planning and Development to which was referred on March 15, 2017. Docket number 0416, message and order to declare surplus the city-owned former Public Works Department parcel located at the northeasterly corner of Ritchie Street and Columbus Avenue, Roxbury District, Ward 11, Parcel 00867010, and to transfer the care, custody, management, and control of said property to the Public Facilities Commission, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0417, the Committee on Planning and Development to which was referred on March 15, 2017. Docket number 0417, message and order to declare surplus, surplus the city-owned former Public Works Department parcel located at Willow Court in the Dorchester District, Ward 7, Parcel 03510000, and to transfer the care, custody, management, and control of said property to the Public Facilities Commission, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
On dockets number 0416 and 0417, Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Planning and Development, Councilor Lenihan.
This, I'd just like to congratulate my colleague on my right, who has decided that he no longer also will run for reelection, and, and wish him all the best, because we've served in my entire 10 years with Council. I wish you well, so. So, last week, the Committee on Planning and Development held a public hearing on April 6, 2017, and William Epperson, along with, who's the senior project manager, James McDonough, who's the attorney, and Donald Wright, all from the Department of Neighborhood Development attended and made a presentation on why docket 01416 should be disposed of, and, and so, along with 00417, the, the first docket is located in Ward 11 in Roxbury, and this particular docket is adjacent to the property for a new, an extension to a new community center, an athletic center in the Jackson Square area. It's approximately 6,000 square feet. Its appraised value is about $120,000, and I truly are in support of this disposition so that we can get this project moving on behalf of the people of Roxbury. And on docket 0417, this parcel is located on Willow Court in Dorchester, in, in Councilor Baker's district, and is 1,100 square feet. It's a, it's a linear sort of parcel. It's adjacent to a development that will allow for greater access and egress to, inconvenience with the neighbors and abotters. So, this also seems to be a very prudent disposition, and I ask my colleagues to support both. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Lenihan. Would anyone else like to speak on these matters, district councilors? Councilor Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, sorry. I do support this, this transfer here that Councilor Lenihan presided over. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Baker. Great, then at this time, Councilor Lenihan moves for acceptance of the committee report and passage of both dockets, and we will take them one by one. Madam Clerk is signaling to me that these need to be roll call votes. Is that accurate? Great, thank you. So, we will proceed with a roll call for docket 0416.
Councilor Baker.
Yes.
Councilor Baker, yes. Council Campbell. Council Campbell, yes. Council Siomo. Council Siomo, yes. Council Savi George. Council Savi George, yes. Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty, yes. Council Jackson. Council Jackson, yes. Council Lamatina. Council Lamatina, yes. Council Lenihan. Council Lenihan, yes. Council McCarthy. Council McCarthy, yes. Council O'Malley. Council O'Malley, yes. Council Presley. Council Presley, yes. Council Wu.
Yes.
Council Wu, yes. Madam President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0416 has been passed with a 12 to 0 vote. And could you please call the roll on docket 0417?
Docket number 0417, Council Baker. Council Baker, yes. Council Campbell. Council Campbell, yes. Council Siomo. Council Siomo, yes. Council Savi George. Council Savi George, yes. Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty, yes. Council Jackson. Council Jackson, yes. Council Lamatina. Council Lamatina, yes. Council Lenihan. Council Lenihan, yes. Council McCarthy. Council McCarthy, yes. Council O'Malley. Council O'Malley, yes. Council Presley. Council Presley, yes. Council Wu.
Yes.
Council Wu, yes. And Council Baker, Miss.
Docket 04. Affirmative. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0417 has also been passed with a 12 to 0 vote. Matters recently heard for possible action.
Madam President, I'll read those four.
Oh, let's start with docket 0484 first.
We could do that. That would make sense, being this, that's the next order. Thank you, Madam President. I think I'm on baby watch or something, I don't know. Docket number 0484, order for the city council to hold biannual urban renewal progress update hearings until 2022.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Planning and Development, Councilor Lenihan.
Thank you, Madam President. On Monday, April 10, we held a two-hour meeting, which was basically an update from the Boston Planning and Development Authority, informing us about their progress on urban renewal and LDAs and the like. There were 10 council members present. They participated in a vigorous discussion with questions and actually laid out criteria for our next update in six months. Most of the colleagues felt that, that they had made progress and that it is, it's proven to be a very important time each year that for, for every six months, we, we get an update on these matters, and the community, many members from the community who are present who also listen. Thank you. And this matter should be retained in the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Lenihan. Docket number 0484 will remain in the Committee on Planning and Development.
Docket number 0182, message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept an expenditure grant of $129,910 from the U.S. Department of Justice and Massachusetts' Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for the FY16 Burn Justice Assistant Grant for the purpose of Sex Offender Registry Notification Act through the Address Verification Pilot Program. Docket number 0247, message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept an expenditure grant of $1,114,789.29 from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security to the City of Boston's Police Department to support the FY2017 Center Charles E. Shannon Community Safety Initiative. Docket number 0342, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept an expenditure grant of $40,000 for the FY17 Mass Decontamination Units from the U.S. Department of Human Services as they pass through the Massachusetts Department of Public Health to be administered by the Boston Fire Department. And docket number 0343, message and order authorizing the police commissioner to accept an expenditure grant of $25,000 from the FY16 Paul Coverdale Forensic Science Improvement awarded by the National Institute of Justice, tasked with the Massachusetts State Police/Prime Lab.
On dockets 0182, 0247, 0342, and 0343, Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, Council Campbell.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Madam Clerk. I also want to thank Council Flaherty, who joined us on Monday for this, the hearing that we held on these several grants. So, I'll take them in order first. Docket 0182, a grant in the amount of $129,000, and $129,910 is going towards a one-year pilot program called the Address Verification Pilot Program. Sergeant Ken Turner of the Boston Police Department testified in regards to this matter. Currently, Suffolk County has the highest number of sex offenders in violation of federal registration mandates. This pilot program will include collaboration with the Pro Board, the Massachusetts State Police, as well as the U.S. Marshals Office, and will provide funding for additional overtime for BPD detectives to be able to locate these offenders who are in violation, and then to, of course, verify their current address. Docket number 0247, which is in the amount of $1,114,789.29, is for the Shannon Community Safety Initiative. Demond Bills from the Boston Police Department spoke about the successful strategies, and frankly, new strategies that he's deploying to ensure that new organizations can apply for this funding, as well as insisting that more of the money from this grant actually go to the community and less, frankly, with the city of Boston. Through a new competitive RFP process, he established 16 programs are currently sponsored by the grant. They've been chosen for their work with young people between the ages of 10 and 24 in areas with high rates of violence and with a proven track record of programmatic success. The programs are currently operating in police districts C11, B2, B3, and A7, which is East Boston. We've recently just added East Boston. He noted that he, as well as the department, is seeing improved public safety measures and outcomes, and that this funding, of course, we always wish we could get more. They'll continue to advocate the state level for additional funding, but this funding is vital to programs that serve youth, particularly those who are at risk for gang involvement. The third is docket number 30342. Captain Edward Anderson of the Boston Fire Department testified, this is $40,000 for mass decontamination units. The NDUs are stationed at local, are stationed at local hospitals equipped to respond in the event of an incident which requires patients to be decontaminated, such as in the case of a hazmat chemical exposure. They are pre-deployed for events such as the marathon and July 4 celebrations. Equipment supported by this grant include inflatable, inflatable shelters, generators, air heaters, water heaters, barrier tape, cleaning supplies, protective suits, and respirators, and so much more. The last docket is docket number 0343, in the amount of $25,000. This is for the Paul Coverdale Forensic Science Improvement Grant. Maria Chivers, who is the Director of the Office of Research and Development at the Maria Chevers, who is the Director of the Office of Research and Development at the Boston Police Department, testified on behalf of this grant. And this is the 10th year that the department is receiving this from the National Institute of Justice, anticipates it will continue to receive this award. The grant passes through the mass state police and is for use by the Boston Police Department's forensic unit for trainings and conferences that they attend throughout the year. I recommend, as Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, that all four dockets pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Campbell. Would anyone else like to comment on these dockets? Seeing none, we will take each of them separately, starting with docket 0182. Council Campbell moves for acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0182. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0182 has been passed. For docket 0247, all in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0247 has been passed. Docket 0342, all in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0342 has been passed. And finally, docket 0343, all in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 0343 has been passed.
Docket number 0291, order for a hearing to create an immigrant defense fund.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, Council Presley.
Thank you, Madam President, and I want to commend the maker of this hearing order, Council Jackson, for bringing this timely critical issue before the body. I want to thank Council Campbell for her participation. I hope I forgot. I didn't forget anyone. Okay. So this hearing was held on Monday regarding an immigrant defense fund and our panelists did a great job of framing the issue as well as possible solutions for the council. I want to acknowledge, salute, and just affirm the very good work of so many organizations and advocates for immigrants, refugees, and detainees, and for unaccompanied children in particular for whom we heard some very sobering statistics about and are often lost in these discussions. I want to thank MIRA, the PEAR Project, Centro Presente, the Irish International Immigration Center, Greater Boston Legal Services, Lawyers Committee for Civil Rights, ACLU, SCIU Local 32BJ, and the Massachusetts Bar Association for their decades-long efforts and especially now, given the current political rhetoric, climate, and executive orders. And of course, within our own building, we do want to acknowledge the good work daily of the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Advancement headed by Alejandra Sankeyan. We thank her for her daily efforts to ensure that every Bostonian, every resident regardless of their status, knows their rights, feels safe, and empowered to live the best life possible in the city. Monday's hearing highlighted the difference, the stark difference, having representation makes in deportation court cases regardless of status of documentation. Today, if you enter the Boston Immigration Court without an attorney, you have a 4% chance of winning that case, and with an attorney, that percentage rises to 49%. Our first panel of experts were Sarang Sekavat from MIRA, Mary Hopper from Boston College Law School, Ronnie Millar, Sarah Shindel from the Irish Immigration Center, and Roxanna Rivera from SDIU 32BJ. They all outlined the unique challenges that detainees face in accessing legal representation. These hearings are civil cases and so people in the system have no legal right to court-appointed lawyers, which they would if this were a criminal case. The rate at which these hearings are scheduled also limits the effectiveness, to your line of question, Council Campbell, of pro bono lawyers to get up to speed. The need is staggering. In fiscal year 2016, there were 7,513 cases that went through the Boston Immigration Court, which were 20% greater, an increase than FY15. During the hearing, we were also able to unpack a couple of models that are currently in place, New York, Chicago, and Los Angeles. We referred mostly to the New York model. And just to share some numbers with you, they onboarded a pilot program in 2013 to the tune of $500,000. Now in 2017, they have a line item in their city budget of $5 million that is matched by the state to the tune of $9 million. So I request that this matter remain in committee so we can further these conversations. And I'll now turn it over for a final word to the lead sponsor for this hearing order, Council Jackson.
Thank you, Council Presley. Council Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you to the Chair. I think the Chair has done a very good job in hitting on all of the topics that are relevant here. But 4% is the chance that you have of walking out of immigration court without an attorney. 49% is the chance that you have if you have an attorney. It doesn't matter what case you have, but huge, huge stark difference. And so as we have conversations in this building about sanctuary cities and sanctuary city status, those monikers are only as meaningful as the things that we do in this body, in this chamber. And so the question here, and we heard a lot of people speak to this on Monday, is what are we going to do? Are we going to actually step forward and actually do something? In New York City, a pilot program was put forward, and yes, it became a public-private partnership, but it required the will and the backbone of their council to step forward and put some funding forward so that other organizations would step forward. This is our challenge, and as we know, we have a robust community here of folks who are undocumented as well as documented. If we truly want to protect them, if we truly want to do what's right by those families, then we will move forward on this matter. So I look forward to, in this budget process, having a conversation about a line item that would actually reflect a commitment from the Boston City Council, as well as the City of Boston, on this matter, to do something that will actually help people stay here. And we know, and one of the other points that was brought up, is that it costs a lot of money to put people in foster care, about $28,000 a year when you remove a family member who was a breadwinner in that family. And there are other additional costs. And if we were to extract all of those individuals who were undocumented from the state of Massachusetts, we would lose $12 billion. So it must be noted that the individuals who are here, who are working hard to take care of their families and who really believe and show every day their belief in the American dream, that they deserve a chance and an opportunity to have what we just said earlier today, when we put our hands over our hearts every single time that we come into this room, with liberty and justice for all. That simple moniker should apply to every single person, documented and/or undocumented, because they are all citizens of the human race. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council Jackson. Docket number 0291 will remain in the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities.
Docket number 0199, order for the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities to host a series of policy briefings related to key topics in early education and childcare.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, Council Presley.
Thank you, Madam President. Unfortunately, due to a long-standing scheduling conflict, I was unable to chair this hearing. I'll defer to Council Sabi George, who ably chaired in my absence for report. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Presley. Council Sabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Earlier this week, as a member of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, I chaired the third in a policy briefing series we're hosting on childcare. The topic, this session was selected by Council President Wu and focused on funding mechanisms for childcare and the cost of care. I want to thank Council O'Malley and Council Wu for being there with me. We heard from Tracy Palagian, CEO of Social Finance, Dr. Ann Bookman, the Director of UMass Boston Center for Women and Politics and Public Policy, and Elizabeth Gaines from the Forum on Youth Investment. Well, we heard from her via Skype, which was certainly an interesting process and, you know, it shows that I need to improve my friendliness to some technologies. Some of my biggest takeaways were how important it was for us to continue, it is for us to continue to advocate for federal funding for childcare, especially the Childcare Development Block Grant, and the important role that the private sector can play and should play in creating access to childcare. We talked quite a bit about some of the statistics around childcare, who's accessing it, who isn't able to, but then also the tremendous benefits of access to childcare. I thank you, Council President Wu, for bringing this topic before us as part of this series and certainly found it fascinating, interesting, and learned a tremendous amount. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Sabi George. Docket number 0199 will remain in the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities.
Docket number 0482, order for hearing to address recovery service beds at the Southampton Street Shelter.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Homelessness, Mental Health, and Recovery, Council Sabi George.
Thank you once again, Madam President. Yesterday, I chaired the hearing regarding the recovery beds at Southampton Street Shelter. I'd like to thank the sponsor of the order, Council Tito Jackson, as well as Councilors O'Malley and Baker for joining us. We heard from a number of guests on several panels, including Dr. Monica Valdez-Lupe, Director of the Boston Public Health Commission, Beth Rand, Director of Shelter Services, Devin Larkin, Director of the Bureau of Recovery Services, Lydia Downey, the Executive Director of the Pine Street Inn, Dr. Jen Brody, who's the Director of HIV Services for Boston Healthcare for the Homeless, and Morrigan Phillips, who's the Clinical Director of Victory Programs' Mobile Prevention Team. We also heard from a panel of five individuals who were or once were a part of the SOAR and Safe Harbor programs, two of the specific programs we were interested in hearing about at Southampton Street Shelter in particular. I left that hearing reminded again about the hardships of everyday life when you are experiencing homelessness. Not only seeking housing, but storage and a safe place to sleep become top concerns. It has strengthened my belief that the faster we can transition people into permanent supportive housing, the better. I understand that transitional housing programs can feel like an important lifeline for someone in crisis, but as policymakers, we have the responsibility to see the big picture that shelter is not the solution, stable housing is. When the Boston Public Health Commission told guests that SOAR and Safe Harbor were ending, there were 33 individuals participating in the program. We do have some concerns about the timing of the Health Commission's notification of the loss of the funding, or not the loss of the funding, but the change in priority for the funding, as well as the timing that they shared this information with their SOAR and Safe Harbor guests and individuals accessing those programs. We are, I am confident that the Public Health Commission is working to create housing plans for each of those 33 individuals currently in the program. Yesterday, we learned, and today we have confirmed the details for some of those individuals, seven are currently housed either with family and sober living arrangements or with vouchers. In regards to sober living, we are, the Public Health Commission and the shelter and their caseworkers are directed and are only referring individuals to what were considered certified or recommended sober housing living situations. Nine have vouchers or are next in line for housing resources through the BHA. It is important to note that we do have some work as a city to do on that waitlist for the BHA. You know, people can say, well, I'm in line, I'm in line, but that line is often very long and it's hard to sort of determine the length of time that someone would be on that waitlist. 14 will receive rapid rehousing assistance and six have left the program, three of which are currently court involved. Through my role as Chair of the Committee on Homelessness, Mental Health, and Recovery, as well as a member of the Continuum of Care Leadership Council, I will continue to work with the Boston Public Health Commission about the progress in all of these programs, all of their programs, not just this particular program, and work to really support individuals experiencing homelessness and obviously to prevent instances of homelessness. I do ask that this docket remain in committee, and I'm sure that our lead sponsor for this hearing, Council Jackson, will have more to add, as well as maybe others that were in attendance yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Sabi George. Council Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank the Chair for an expedited hearing and the work that she continues to do in this space. We heard the Health Department tell us yesterday that they knew for over a year that these programs were going to be transitioning, and they did not tell the folks who are in the program. Some of them, who has a condition of their probation, are required to be in the program. So as the program closes before, and we also learned that the program will change on April 16th, not June 30th. And so what do the changes mean? What's been stated in the papers has been that, no, we will lose no beds. Well, these programs are for individuals who have now stabilized themselves. They're no longer using. And what's going to happen to them? They're now going to be placed next to people who are using. And what we also know is that seven of the people have relapsed and three people have been reincarcerated. So, and to hear from the City of Boston that we are advocating our responsibility to house people and we're pushing people to sober houses, that scares me. And I've done hearings on sober houses, and I don't know if everyone has one in their district, but I have several sober houses in my district, and there are many people who are actually being taken advantage of in those houses. And when rapid rehousing was described, what was told to us is that they would get $4,000 for first, last, as well as security. And that's it. In a housing market that we know is more expensive than any other housing market, at least on the East Coast for a city our size, we're pushing people from homelessness to market-rate housing with very little help. And what I heard, from what I heard yesterday, and I want to thank the folks who came out, it takes a lot of courage to sit here and let folks know your HIV status, let folks know that you're in recovery, and let folks know that you want to just be simply given dignity and respect and for people to actually see you. So I give the individuals who sat in these seats a lot of credit. But I do take issue with the Public Health Department not giving notice. I do take issue with after the closure of the bridge for us to have another artificial crisis put before our lap, put in our lap, and for the most vulnerable people in the City of Boston. If we can't do for homeless individuals who are trying to stay sober, who are HIV positive, then who can we do for in the City of Boston? Who are we? Who are we as a city? And I think these folks, and some people may think it's a small number of people, but I believe for many people in our interactions, to that one person, we may be the whole world. We have to move with urgency. We have to be decisive in doing right by this population. These folks are not being placed in housing that is permanent. Let's also talk about what permanent housing is. If you have to pay rent every month, there's 12 chances a year that your housing is not going to be permanent. And to give someone a $4,000 check and to say, you know, have at it, I don't believe is something that sets these individuals up for success. We have a lot of work to do here, and yes, the federal government is making some changes. Ryan White funds are also being used here, so this is not all HUD funding. The City of Boston has a responsibility, with a two-year runway up to this, to not push people back into instability. And understand, this is not a loss of beds, but it's a loss of programming. These are individuals who are currently sober, who are now being put back into a wet shelter. They're going to be sleeping next to people who are using. That's what is going to happen, and that's what was told to us. The change is going to happen next week. And so I think it is imperative that this council continue to ensure that the Boston Public Health Commission do the right thing, that we are, again, never, never again in this situation where people who are doing the right thing every single day, trying their hardest, are now put in a position of instability. And I look... And I look, we failed those three people who were in jail. We failed them. And we failed those seven people who relapsed. A lot of people can put things on their shoulders when it comes to using and a personal responsibility, but you know what? We have a personal responsibility to take care of the least of those. And that's the personal responsibility and the mission of the Boston Public Health Commission. So in this budget cycle, we need to figure out how to make it happen for those who have been left behind. Thank you so much, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Counselor Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to get up and out and thank the Chair, Counselor George, yesterday for running a great hearing. I was a little gray at what exactly what was going on with transitional beds and the traditional beds or the shorter stay beds that are on the first law. Basically, it's a model that the feds are walking away from, and everybody else is doing it the other way, which is to try to get people into permanent housing, whatever that looks. I think our charge now moving forward is going to be what happens with these people and this sort of band of people that are in these programs now. How do we support them so they can stay stable? Ultimately, it's about housing for them, and I think maybe that they're, you know, we can't be talking about Long Island like the great old days because a lot of the buildings were in disrepair. It wasn't really that great over there. I think the way we're dealing with homelessness and some of our issues, which we have plenty of, is far better than the way we were doing warehousing out on Long Island. Also, there was an interesting stat yesterday, like almost 50% of these people that are in our shelters are not from the city of Boston. And one of the things that we're doing at the front door triage is to try to identify those people and see if, in fact, where they want to go is back to where their family is, where their supports could be. So I have a much better understanding. I think we have some work to do here with the people that are in these programs now, make sure they have a continuum of care. And I just wanted to thank the Chair again for running a great hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Baker. Docket number 0482 will remain in the Committee on Homelessness, Mental Health, and Recovery. Motion, orders, and resolution.
Docket number 0566, Counselor Linehan offered the following order for hearing regarding Winter Square.
Counselor Linehan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Before I begin with my presentation on this matter, I'd like to move for substitution of language of the title. It was my problem. I originally put down an order for a hearing regarding Winter Square, and knowing very well that this was a home rule petition, so it will read a home rule petition for a special law regarding an act protecting sunlight and promoting economic development in the city of Boston, and I asked for that substitution of language.
Okay, Counselor Linehan moves to substitute a technical change, the title with the correct designation for this type of legislation. Does everyone have a copy of the revised?
They all should have a copy.
Great, everyone has it. Is there any objection to the motion? Hearing none, the new language has been substituted, and we will be discussing that revised version.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to my colleagues. I beg those of you for some indulgence here on time. This is a kind of comprehensive petition, and I just want to introduce it appropriately. Originally, I want to go back. Earlier today, we all passed the two matters for disposition of property. And last year, we disposed of this property that is part of the home rule petition. And at that time, that dollar amount was in the $40 to $60 million range of its assessment and appraised value at that time. And we voted on approving this disposition to the Boston Redevelopment Authority under a formal agreement, which we had with them, to see if that we could get the biggest bang for the buck and the most money for the sale and development of that site. One, the site has been land dormant for at least seven or eight years, and prior to that, it was operated by a private management company as a parking facility, and those dollars went to the BHA, because $1.8 million a year annually went to provide public safety for the Boston Housing Authority. So this particular docket is a special law and petition so that this particular development that would avail $153 million if built to the city of Boston. Far and above what we ever imagined would have been extracted from the sale of this property. And far and above, as ever that I know of, bought a single piece of property, and it's in my district, and I've been trying to get the city through the past two administrations to do something with this property. And so I feel really confident that we've all played a significant role in getting to a place where we have a petition that would allow us to execute it. The petition basically will strengthen the city's commitment to the future of the Boston Common by eliminating the shadow bank. So there'll be no shadow bank after this is passed and goes up to the State House. Presently, I think there's 20% left in the shadow bank at this time, and this particular project, if it was in the Midtown Cultural District, if it was, and it's further away from the Common than the Midtown Cultural District, it would not need any change of the law, and it would not need any portions of the existing shadow bank. It would not need. It's just that it's not included, and it's a couple of blocks away, further away from the Common and the public art. So the proposal includes two additional commitments to addressing the impacts of the shadows on Boston's public spaces. And one is would codify Article 48 of the Boston Zoning Code, which is modeled after the Boston Common shadow protections, and this is for Copley Square. But we will actually put this in this legislation so that if zoning changed or if things changed over time in administrations or on council, the protections would still be there for the Copley Square. That's included in this also. And also requires the Boston Planning and Development Agency to conduct a planning initiative for downtown Boston. So many of the neighbors in the downtown area, both in my district as well as in Josh's, have wanted to see a comprehensive planning study for the downtown area. And this will also be included in the text of the home rule so that this is executed as part of state law. So the proposed project, Millennium Partners, as I said, is worth over $150 million. We get $103 million upfront, and then when they sell the condos, we get $50 million after that. And that's, so when it was operating, it was generating $1.8 million, and that money was going to the BHA for their public safety. Presently, if this is developed, it will generate $12 million in new tax rep a year in perpetuity, as long as the place is. That's in addition to the $153 million. This is one of the best deals that we as a city has ever crafted and architected, and we did it on the strength, on the strength of our relationship with the administration and the BPDA, as they now present themselves. The administration's made a commitment out of the $102 million that $28 million of it would go to the Boston Common. And $28 million of it would go to Franklin Park. So there's $56 million that's going to open space. $11 million to the Emerald Next 65. Boston Housing Authority will get $35 million to receive for the South Boston Old Colony development, to do Phase Four or Five, or maybe both, and to continue the development in East Boston at Orient Heights. And if you take the $1.8 million over 20 years, it comes out to about the same amount of money that we were already contributing to the BHA. And now they would get it in a capital investment in these properties to renovate existing and indicate not affordable housing, public subsidized. So, a couple other lead points. So just on the shadow itself, we all know when we did this agreement that this money generally goes to the Capital Disposition Fund. Excuse me. The capital, so if $150 trillion eventually goes to the Capital Disposition Fund, that money's available for capital expenditure. And that's what this money would be targeted at the BHA facilities and all these open space facilities. So it's not really for programmatic money. If there was some disqualification for what this money would have to be used for, other than that, you need the city council's approval to do it. So we're in another position that if we have this money and it doesn't specifically adhere to the Capital Disposition Fund prerequisite, then we would have to vote to approve the expenditure by the administration. I mean, I've been around here for a while, on both sides, and this is a pretty good deal. Matter of fact, it's a great deal. Is it going to cost us something? Yeah, we're going to put a shadow on the Common, and a shadow that could still go on by another building if people so decided they could use the shadow bank, but now we're going to get rid of that. So this is the only shadow that will go on from now on. This particular shadow, no shadow will pass 9:25 a.m. If you're in the Midtown Cultural District, it's 10:00. That verifies what I was talking about. 101 days in compliance with the law being outside the Midtown Cultural District. 13 days with 20 minutes or fewer shadow added. And the maximum duration is 1 hour and 30 minutes. And for the public art, and it's 8 a.m., 245 days in compliance, and the max shadow 29 minutes. So this document here is comprehensive. We'll have a hearing. I'm asking that the Chair of the said committee would move on this matter because we have been at this for nearly two years, and we need to get this done. We need to get it up to the State House. So I'm asking all of my colleagues to participate in the hearing and to vet this document, look at it closely. If we need to alter or make some changes in the hearing process, please articulate that in the hearing because that's what will be needed if we were going to do a new draft. So with that, I beg your indulgence again. Very important matter, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Counselor Linehan. Counselor Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, and I want to thank the author and Counselor Linehan for his work on this. I just want to put into perspective a couple of things. I think it's critical to understand that the BPDA, BRA at the time, tried to usurp our body on this matter. It is our body's responsibility to vote on the disposal of a garage or a parking lot. They put out an RFP prior to seeking that from our body. In addition, I think it is important, and in that process, I don't think this is really about a shadow. It's about a shadow we process and foggy decision-making. This has not been a transparent process. Millennium has been exempted a couple of times already for their commitments to affordable housing, most recently to the tune of about $5.9 million. And the FAA has already, and also stepped in. And I think it is important, and this is also why when we're having the conversation about the BPDA, that our body have final approval over all of these, and I'm glad that it's coming before us. I am still very, very troubled. This project, by the way, only puts housing after 40 floors. They're going to build up 40 floors, and then that's where the housing actually goes. We are permanently putting a shadow on the oldest public park in the United States of America, and we also need to note that, yes, we get $100 million upfront, but the $50 million is actually in the backend contingent upon the sales of, the future sales of the units in that building. And so I think it's, again, thinking about opening the door of a state law, pushing one through that door, and then shutting that door. What does that say about public policy? What does that say about fair play? What does that say about the precedent that something such as that actually sets? And that's what's happening here today. We're asking to open the door of an over 20-year state law, to put forward something that falls short, and this is actually on public land, that breaks that current state law, and then shut that door forever. I think we really need to think about the type of precedent that that makes. And yes, the funds are very attractive, and one of the venerable institutions that would actually benefit from that is in my district. But to think, and this is also why we need to think of planning holistically and not only in a bubble, and have a holistic approach to planning in the city of Boston. I look forward to Counselor Linehan's shepherding of this, but I think we are on the third rail, and I think there's a danger sign that I see. Thank you so much, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Docket number 0566, in its revised form, will be assigned to the Committee on Government
Docket number 0567, Counselor McCarthy offered the following resolution, designating a Memorial Hero Square at 927 Harrison Ave in honor of Chief Water Tender Frank Elmer Smith.
Counselor McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. This is actually a refile for Frank Elmer Smith. Served in the Navy for 30 years, served in the Spanish-American War, the West Indies, Philippines, China, and the China Boxer Rebellion, working with Boston's Veteran Services. We actually found out where Frank grew up, so he moved the site to 927 Harrison Ave in Roxbury. So at this time, I would like to have a suspension in passage of this order.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. At this time, Counselor McCarthy moves for suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0567. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0567 has been adopted. Personnel orders.
Docket number 0568, Counselor Wu for Counselor Seoma. Offer the following.
Counselor Seoma moves for suspension in passage of docket 0568. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0568 has been passed.
Docket number 0569, Counselor Wu for Counselor Seoma.
Counselor Seoma moves for suspension in passage of docket 0569. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0569 has been passed.
Docket number 0570, Counselor Wu for Counselor Jackson.
And Counselor Jackson moves for suspension in passage of docket 0570. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0570 has been passed. I'm informed by the clerk that there are no late filed matters for today's agenda, and there is one late filed matter for the consent agenda, which in the absence of objection will be added. Hearing none. Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The consent agenda is adopted. And finally, moving to the green sheets, does anyone wish to pull a matter from the green sheets? No takers. We will then pause for open space for comments or announcements from the members. Great, so at this time, if, oh, apologies, Counselor Baker.
That's all right. I just want to, like Counselor Linehan said to Counsel Lamontina earlier, that it was sad news last when I heard he wasn't running again. I kind of, you know, the emoji with the sad face is what I was feeling, so we'll say goodbye for another nine months, okay? It'll be nine months of goodbyes, and then, but I enjoyed serving with you.
Thank you, Counselor Baker. And yes, we will definitely do more on that later on. We're going to pretend it's not going to happen for both of you for a while. Counselor Jackson, for what? Counselor Jackson, for what purpose do you rise?
I just wanted to let Sal know that I was going to miss him. And it has been great working with you and that Tim McCarthy probably needs to change his seat before he retires too.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Okay, then at this time, if all counselors and guests could please rise. Today, the council will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Siomo, John Bugas and Joe Esposito. For Counselor Lamontina, Sammy DePaolo and Ralph Lamontina. For Counselor O'Malley, Virginia Costello and Frank Galvin. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, we do so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. We're scheduled to meet again Wednesday, April 26th at 12:00 noon. All in favor of adjournment, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. We can stay here if you'd like. The ayes have it, council is adjourned.